That worked, okay. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Pursuant to NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been posted and published in all appropriate locations.
Okay, I need a roll call, please, Diane.
Mr. Book has an excused absence this evening. Ms. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Ms. Camilla?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Costanzo?
Here.
Mr. Najarian?
Here.
Okay, we got approval for resolutions.
Resolution 2021-30, MIB Properties LLC, Block 14801, Lot 502, 125 South Cooks Bridge Road, granting variance approval for signage. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camillo, Ms. Russell, Ms. Bradley, and Mr. Najarian.
I need a motion in a second, please.
Motion?
No, wait, we have the motion in a second.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camilla?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-31, appointments to the Board of Adjustment for the township for the period July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
I need a motion in a second.
Okay, excuse me. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camillo, Ms. Russell, Mr. Costanzo, and Mr. Najarian. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, sorry.
I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camilla?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
And that's it for resolutions.
Okay, I need approval for the minutes.
Approval of minutes, July 21st, 2021. Eligible, Ms. Fritz, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camilla, Ms. Russell, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Costanzo, and Ms. Najarian.
I need a motion and a second of the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camilla?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Approval of minutes, August 4th, 2021. Eligible, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camilla, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Costanzo, and Mr. Najarian.
I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camilla?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
And that's it.
Okay, beautiful. I have two vouchers. Okay, one from Diane and one from Kim. Just fine. Okay, I need a motion in a second on...
A motion.
Then I'm...
Second.
We got a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camilla?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Get them down.
Well, announcements, you're asking.
Is there any announcements? Do you have any announcements?
I have none.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, next one is, I need to be sworn in all professionals who've sworn in.
If you gentlemen could please raise your right hands, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to provide before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Please each state your full names and positions for the record.
Jeffrey Puporo, zoning officer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Evan Hill, board engineer.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we got the first applicant coming up here, okay, uh, is Michael Rondos. Come on up, get sworn in.
Good evening, Mr. Rondos. If you could please raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that, or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state your full name, spelling your last name, and provide your current address?
Yes, Mike Rondos, 311 Chandler.
Can you just spell your last name for the record?
Sir, can you send that microphone up to your mouse so we can hear you personally? Thank you.
Deal now.
I reset.
Yeah, Mike Rondos and 311 Chandler.
And can you spell your last name for the record?
Rondos.
Spell it, please.
R-O-N-D-O-S.
Thank you.
All right, so we previously heard your application and you had submitted now a update on...
Yes, the survey.
So tell us what this is all about.
Uh, just, uh, it was previously, we talked about the survey, so because I have the old survey from '92, so I updated from the now, and just the one, sir say he needs just need a new survey, that's, I get it.
I wanted, I wanted to link it up, so I'd have Mr. Hill there.
Yeah, and I, little changing for my shed, it's not the overhang, so I cut the overhang and, because I don't want it close to the, my pool, so just little bit update.
Did you make some adjustments?
Yes.
Okay, good. Mr. Hill?
Uh, yeah, so the applicant has submitted a revised survey. The date got cut off on our copy, but it's definitely more current. Uh, it depicts an in-ground pool in the rear yard, which really, which wasn't there previously, and you'll notice the hatched area on the, in the rear of the property, which extends quite a bit further beyond the first page. That's, that's a utility, electrical utility right-of-way, so no improvements are allowed within that, uh, as far as permanent improvements. So the applicant has relocated the shed, it's 16 foot by 34 foot. Uh, he's indicated in testimony that he's removing the previously, uh, designed porch area, and he is, he is asking for two feet from the property line now, as opposed to five, and that's, that's primarily because of the more recent survey. So two foot from the property line.
Chair, what's your opinion as to his asking for it to be two feet because it doesn't want on top of the pool, is that...
Uh, the pool wasn't previously depicted on the old survey, now it is, so we had to adjust it by three feet.
Back away from the pool, you said.
Uh, it's right next to the pool, but it's, it's results in being two feet closer to the property line.
If I may, I have a follow-up question. As per the, the survey, there's an indication of an outhouse, and I guess to the, I don't know compass direction, I guess the northern part of the property, the fence line, is that his stockade fence line, it's outside of his property?
Uh, is the fence on the side, are both of your, is that your fence on the sides? Okay. Uh, it does appear, based on the survey, that it's 15 and a half feet beyond his property line. Uh, I would say that's really not an issue for the board in the sense that that's a, that's a potential title issue, I'll defer the attorney on that, but there's nothing, uh, I don't think, I don't believe that falls within the board's jurisdiction with this application.
Okay, thank you.
Is it gonna be electric?
Well, no, nothing, just electrician.
No bathroom chair?
Nothing.
No.
Just the power, just the power. Just the power, the light.
It's gonna be electric?
Yes, just because I need the light to see. No water, no, nothing.
Any other questions for board members?
Mr.?
Mr. Rondos, what's going to be the use of that shed?
Uh, basically for my mover ATV parking, and I have a lot of stuff, I do the construction business, so I save my tools, because it's everything, it's outside now with the cover, my tarp, because I'm not can building anything, it's over there, it's basically pool and power lines, right, that's the one spot where I can put at the shed.
Is there any reason you can't put it in the back of the property?
Nope.
There's no reason why you can't put it in the back of the property?
Now, there is.
What's, what is?
There is, the electric...
I don't see the hatched area you...
That hatched area is the right-of-way for the utility transmission lines, so no permanent structures, uh, can be installed within that right-of-way.
Well, as per the survey, ZVO is...
So...
Yeah.
That's not part of this application, though, that's an existing improvement, but no permanent structures are, uh, allowed to be installed within utility right-of-ways. You can do surface cover improvements, such as parking lots and, and, you know, shrubbery and things like that, um, but they, they typically do not allow structures within the right-of-way. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sir, you're not gonna run a business of any sort out of this shed, are you?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Any other issues? I'd like to open it up to the public, anybody here on this, uh, application. I'd like to close public session, not seeing anybody coming forward. All right, it's ours, uh, board members. So let's have some dialogue and a final motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question of the applicant? Mr. Rondos, you, you indicate that this is your fence around the property, Craig, you installed it?
Uh, that's, yeah, that's the old fences, uh, what I reported before and was existing, so I don't...
The fence I'm talking about, if I'm, I'm looking from the, from the road.
Hmm.
It's on the left side.
And left and right, a little bit.
Okay, and the back?
Uh, yes, metal, it's, or safe for the pool.
Now, have you, has your neighbor ever mentioned anything to you about...
No, he got the fence with the dock over there, no.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
He got the dock over there, the fences where I put it, the shed, so he don't complain anything, I will talk to him.
Have you spoken to your neighbor about it?
Yes.
No objection?
Nope. And I, and I crossed the steel side, I wanna ask it before I put it, because I don't wanna lose the money, but he don't agree, so...
Okay, so I need a motion and a second, if there's no other discussion here.
Have a question.
Yes.
Is there a reason? Should I put it more narrow and long, so you want that question? Make it, uh, look more than two feet?
Uh, if I put a little shorter, it's, uh, it's, you mean, if I make it a little shorter, like not the 16 by 10, it's too tiny for...
Uh...
I don't wanna make like big garage behind it, I wanna make it look nice too, it's behind me for cosmetics. I don't wanna big and I don't wanna small, I wanna like, you know, look good for my pool and what is the gazebo there and look pretty nice and make it stuff up from the property to the inside, that's all.
To that point, I think the applicant's made a concession in that regard, the fact that he's taken away, or he's actually redesigned the shed, for lack of a better term, 16 by 13, we're losing the shed, but he's taking away that overhang.
No, I take it out the overhang, yes.
Yeah, so I, I think with that concession, um... I, I think based on, on what I, now that we finally have a survey, something to put our teeth into, it, it does illuminate the situation out there, um, and I think, given the information presented to the board, I'd like to, uh, um, put forth a motion and approval of this application.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, we got a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camilla?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes, we have you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, next applicant. Frank Cerbo. Right here. And Arlene. Come on up. We'll be swearing.
Good evening. Could you both please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please both state your full names and spell your last names?
Frank Cerbo.
Bring that microphone down to you. Now, we're gonna change, yeah, we're gonna...
Frank Cerbo. S-C-E-R-B-O.
Arlene Turnova Cerbo. It's T-E-R-R-A-N-O-V-A hyphen S-C-E-R-B-O.
And can one of you just put your current address on the record, please?
3 Olivia Way.
Okay, so what, what would you like to do? Tell us what you wanna do.
Uh, we had a garage built, and somehow the, the builders moved it a little bit. But it, it, originally, it, someone said the garage was not where it is, but it is originally. Some papers got mixed up, I don't know how, but we put in for a driveway to be extended to the garage, and that, that verifies that the garage is where it, we, we said it was originally gonna be placed, because we, we, the, the driveway was extended to the garage, and it shows so, so many feet.
Uh, uh, through the chair?
Yes.
You've stated a few things here that are better than confusing.
I can't.
You, you've, you've stated a few things, I think, that are confusing to me, I need some clarification. You saying that the garage was improper, well, let's start with this, when was the garage erected?
Um, it was, uh, built last year, um, it was finished sometime in the summertime.
Of 2020?
Yes, it's, I think they started in April and they may have finished like May, early June.
And, and you testified that your original plans were that the garage was gonna be in a specific place, correct? Your plans show, no, yes?
When we submitted the, the original for the permit, the garage was in a certain spot. We submitted all the plans and so forth. Somehow, when the builders went to go put the pilings in, it got shifted a little.
Well, what's a little?
None.
What's required is 50, and now they're getting 46.
Yeah, on one side, it's four feet, um, short of...
Is that right?
So, in the applica, in the application...
It's up there.
Yeah, in the application package, there's a plan, um, that's, that's titled Survey of Property by Morgan Engineering, and it was dated 10/30/19. That plan has a, a 30 by 48-foot pole barn sketched in there, where the 48 feet is running along the rear of the property line. Everybody see that plan? And then they show a 25-foot driveway extension. This is the copy of the zoning officer's approval. This did not require any variances. The very last drawing in the page, in the package, which is the larger 11 by 17, is a more recent survey of property dated 10/30/19, but revised through, uh, January 11th, 2021. This was an as-built survey essentially of what was constructed, and if you compare the two drawings, the garage, however it was done, or for whatever reason, the garage appears to have been rotated 90 degrees. Somebody made that decision to do it. It was built that way. Therefore, the driveway wasn't extended all the way to the rear, uh, as originally proposed. Regardless where the garage was built, uh, based on this survey, shows that a, it, it's four foot beyond the 50-foot setback, therefore requires a variance. The setback is 50 feet. The actual dimension is closer to 46. That's why these applicants are here.
Through the chair.
It's on, it's on one side, that is the 46, correct?
Hmm. Through the chair.
Yes.
Who made the decision to shift the garage?
No, no one made it, I put...
No, 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 they had, someone have had to made, you submitted a plan showing the garage in such a, such a configuration. We then get a final site plan, and the garage is rotated 90 degrees, is that 90 or 100?
It's about 90.
90 degrees.
Someone twisted the house.
So, who made that decision to twist the garage 90 degrees?
No, when, when I put the, the, the sticks in the ground, they were, the garage was turned.
It was in the right way, I think, opposed to, I'm sure.
The garage.
Frank, you need to...
Sir, sir.
Frank.
You gotta, you have, anything you say has to be through the microphone for the record.
You need to speak over here. You need to speak over here.
I, I, I just wanna clarify, if I could, your original plans to the town were for the garage to be in a particular position, well within any setbacks, et cetera. Then the final product, it's not, it's been twisted. So I, I need to know, what was the story, what's the story behind that?
When, I don't know how it happened, when the, the stakes were in the...
Going up, did you not raise any concerns?
Pardon me?
As the garage is being erected, were you not concerned that it wasn't the way you wanted it to be?
It, it looked like it, I, I, I didn't notice that, that they turned it a little bit.
Sir, do you live there?
Yeah.
So you didn't notice during the construction that the, it wasn't the way you planned it?
I told the, the fellow, the, that, the, this was exactly...
Frank, can I hear you?
Well, through, on the microphone, I, I, I know, we have the diagram, we have, we know what the original plan was.
All right, if you look at the back of the garage, all right, the corner closest to the, the fence?
Yes.
That's 50 foot, and I told the fellows building the garage, make, uh, make, the other one may have been off just a little bit, but not that, not four feet. I said when they're building a garage, make, make sure you, you keep it, you know, 50 foot from the back, but there was a, a dirt brought in, and the bulldozer probably knocked the, the stake off, because I painted them red.
Well, well, sir, at the end of the day, you being the property owner, you're responsible for the final product. Would you not agree? You paid, you paid for a product, and you accepted, at, at, what, what situation that we have now, would that not be correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, when I looked out there again, this, the stake was there, it looked like I, I, you know, was in the right position.
All right, if I may, let me move on in my questioning. I don't need to take the board's time off, but what is the intended use of the building?
I can't hear you.
What do you intend to use the building for?
It's just, uh, storage for classic cars.
How many classic cars do you own?
How many?
Yes, sir.
Around 16.
And how long? How long have you owned these cars?
How, how long?
Yeah.
Oh gee, maybe from 1990?
So, previous to having your barn on the property, did you store them on your property?
No, uh, we, we just purchased the house in December of, uh, 2019.
I, I, I had an 82-foot-long garage at 107 Gordon's Corner Road.
Okay.
English Town.
All right, so...
We just got married.
Yeah, what I think happened here is, you know, all along the inspections were being done, everything was okay. Once the building was completed, we think, uh, there's been, I don't know exactly who, but there's been, uh, a particular neighbor that's been complaining since...
Then we took the trees down.
Before we even moved in, we've, uh, we've been having complaints filed. One, of course, the trees came down, why did we take all the trees down, and it, it's been constant, constant complaints. So I think that's how we got to this point today.
Well, there's other issues here, obviously, you're outside of, of, you're, you know, within, well, you're, you're in violation of setbacks, et cetera, that's why you're really here. That's not a matter of complaints that have been filed, that I have no bearing really here, or any testimony. My, my question too is, um, so you, your intended use is for storage of your vehicles?
Correct.
All right, so are there any other vehicles, other than the 16 cars you proposed to, to store in that building? Or do you have other cars on that property presently?
Yes, we do.
How many cars do you have?
How many on, uh, outside of the garage, you mean?
Yes, yeah, on the property in general, inside, outside, how many cars in total do you have?
Oh, is, uh...
I got a, uh...
Sixteen.
I got a 59 Chevy, 58, 2250.
All right, all right. Just... Total. Total number of cars?
Six, I think 16.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
You own the ball.
Yes.
Are these all registered, uh, uh, registered for the, with the, uh...
They're all registered, yes.
All right, but more importantly, again, it just, I, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around the situation that you originally had the garage in one particular position, and then either through stakes being moved, et cetera, someone totally dropped the ball and moved this garage 90 degrees?
Um, we don't, honestly, we don't know how that happened.
Well, it happened, and, and again, you being the property owner, you ultimately have the responsibility. I, I've, I'm gonna pass in all my comments for now until other board members chime in.
Mr. Chairman?
Do the chair.
Yes.
I got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, what type of utilities, if any, are, are in the garage? Do you have, uh, utilities going, going to that garage? Power, nothing?
No, it's all electric in the garage currently. We do have, uh, Mick files that we did receive approval for, to put, uh, electric in the garage, but we have not done that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Jane, go ahead.
It's a question from Mr. Puporo. Uh, there's indication from the property owners that there were inspections during the, uh, the construction, and this is an accessory use. Um, would, would they get a certificate of occupancy at the end, when, when it's completed?
Yes, the building department would issue a, you know, a CO.
So it was issued, it was issued.
I haven't investigated that part of it, but I would presume that the permits were closed out.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Um, was your builder notified that the building was shifted, and how did they, what was their response?
I'm sorry?
When, when it was determined that the building was switched or turned, rotated 90 degrees, did you notify your builder, you, I mean, I don't mean to be rude, but you paid for this service?
We did, we did, and, um, because my husband signed off on the final, hey, they will do nothing.
And they couldn't explain how it changed from your original plan?
No.
What's up with the question?
I don't know.
Yes.
Our first, uh, we're, we're in the garage. Yes, uh, the last inspector that came, uh, to us said that we could put the, uh, you know, cars in there, so there are cars currently in there, yes.
Same as well.
Okay, I do buy the property, I sell several parts on the lot. A lot, yeah. So, is the lot, is it all parts as well? No, no, the garage will fit approximately, how many cars could fit in the garage?
Well, it'll fit six, but if I put a double lift in, then I can put 12 in.
Well, wait, a double lift?
No, 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 it's a, it's a road. You testified earlier, you have 16 parts in the garage.
Not in the garage, we own 16 classic cars.
How many vehicles do you intend to put in the garage?
Six, but it has a cable, it's high, the garage is high, so you can put 12 in.
What's the ordinance with regards to the lifts, uh, garage here? I don't imagine there's any...
I, I can attest that there is not. I said there is not, no.
You could put the lift without any...
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Do you serve the file of, you know, electric, do you, please, that, that part of the lift, the permit, you live on your permit? Well, once we have electric in, in the garage, then we could put the lifts, because the lifts would work through electric, of course. Okay, so, until that happens, there are going to be, every, what, 10 parts, 12
Okay, so until that happens, there are going to be, every, what, ten cars, thirteen cars on, on the lot?
Correct. Yes.
They are, uh, they all have to just, they have to be registered.
They are registered.
That's the only requirement, and it's, I think it's more of a, it's a state requirement, not necessarily an ordinance requirement, but, uh, as long as their vehicles are registered, there is no, there's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't have fifty cars on your property. It just can't be, they all have to be registered.
And the ordinance does say you can't have one unregistered vehicle.
Correct, yeah, actually, uh, I inspect.
In a section, right, moving on the car. All right, we're not here, we're not here today for that. Okay, so, let's keep moving. Anybody else on the board that you have a topic? Uh, James, are you all clear? Okay. All right, so, let's move, uh, any other professionals anything, we said, or open up the phone. Anybody in the public on the phone to speak, okay, well, one time, five hundred and eighty. Down if you would, yeah, down. The few that they have to say. Mona, good morning, I believe you live.
Good evening, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give before this, uh, board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state your full names, spelling your last name for the record?
Okay, my name is Karen, my last name is Drewal, it's D R E W A L. My main house.
Just one second, what, what's your current address?
My current address is thirty-nine Barber's Way, that is my home. I've lived with my boyfriend at Five Olivia Way for the last ten years, okay? I have been the one that's been going down to the buildings department over this incident. When I went down, um, and I have a copy of the paper of the building going this way. It was signed off on one twenty-three twenty. And it shows the building going, uh, from my backyard to the neighbor, of course, on the other side. So, facing, I'm to the left, I'm Five Olivia Way, okay? Um, when I got the paperwork, I brought it home and I showed my boyfriend. And he went in the back and he looked because his job is a contractor, okay? Then when I went back, I got that new form showing me that the garage is now going this way from the street to the back neighbor. And I'm showed that the back neighbor has, um, part of their property being attached to it. And mine is a little to the left of it, that he's on our property. Now, that's the easement, and my question is, when I go to sell my house, that's an issue for me because he's on my property line. And I have to notify. Sure.
So, I, I think, so I'm gonna try to clarify.
Sure.
The garage does not encroach across your property. It encroaches on the setback on your neighbor's property, it's not, that's not your property line. The structure is, uh, not on your property. And the only reason why the applicant is here tonight is because a, the rear right corner of his structure is four foot closer to the rear property line, not yours, the rear property line than fif, than the required fifty. But the structure is not on your property, ma'am.
Okay, but when I went down to the buildings department and they gave me a copy of it. She highlighted in the back for the neighbor and highlighted a corner of it being my property on Five Olivia.
That's, that's not correct.
Okay.
You misinterpreted what she was highlighting. This, based on a survey that was performed after this was built. This structure is not on your property. And it's, it's not, no, it's not an easement, it's, it's twenty feet from your property line. There's no property line issue here. Zero. So it doesn't impact your property at all.
Okay, so now my question is, I have only one question. If I go down to the buildings department to the, to the clerk's office and they tell me a building's gonna be built this way. And then it's turned around to totally something totally different, okay? Um, I don't think it's acceptable that it should be turned around and they do whatever they want when plans were set up a certain way. Um, with the buildings department of how they were going to erect this building. So now it's going from the front of the street to the back. And, you know, um, when it should have went the opposite way. And I wouldn't have had to look at what's outside on the street and in the backyard if it was going the opposite direction. Um, other than that, I mean, it's bringing property values down, um, it's making neighbors angry. And this is why I'm here, because I'm to the left of the building.
Good evening, can you, uh, please raise your right hand? You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state your full name, spelling your last?
Thomas Nappo, N A P P O.
And your current address, please.
Five Olivia Way.
Thank you.
First of all, the cars are in bags for eighteen months out there. I notice it's not a cause issue. Those cars will never get inside the shed. He's got two other cars parked on the opposite side of the shed by my property line. They've been sinking in the mud for twelve months. Never starts them. Not covered with bags, now you imagine, how, now you've been in the neighborhood, okay? It's a pristine, beautiful neighborhood. I have Fred Sanford living next to me. My house value has gone down a turtleneck. People come and look at me and say, what is that? Now, I don't know, I had my entire life savings in the house. And now, I've lost two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars of value. You may not think so, but if I'm driving up and I look at all these cars, you gotta wonder about groundwater. We, uh, seepage into the ground, we all drink well water here. Does anybody come, come and test the ground? Do I have to call the EPA? Is the antifreeze coming out of these old antiques? I don't know, but I do have kids. And, you know, we all drink water from the ground. And I don't think it's a safe situation. I don't know what he stores in the shed, he never opens the door, he keeps it halfway while he works on his cars. If you were living next to fifteen cars outside in bags, you'd be a little concerned about them rusting away and, and seeping antifreeze, oil, gasoline into the ground. Now, I don't know if this is the board to handle it, but I'm concerned about health risks. I mean, we drink well water here. I don't think it should be allowed. I just, we're too close, we all drink well water. I mean, you're concerned about insecticides and fertilizers. This guy has twenty cars parked outside. These cars are old, they're sinking into the mud.
This is, uh, that's outside the board.
I hear you, but you can imagine the frustration. He's been my neighbor for over a year, I don't say two words to him because he just don't care. He don't care. My house is pristine. I paid a lot of money for it, I've been there almost twenty years. I keep quiet, I don't say nothing. But this, I think, is a little out of hand. It's not sixteen classic cars, it's sixteen junk, that's what it is, junk. None of them even move, none of them are even like, obitable, it's ridiculous, okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
All right, I mean, I hear you, he should turn the garage the way. He, I'll tell you why he turned the garage that way, because I'm a contractor. Because he wouldn't have access to the double doors that way. And he would actually block his whole view from his backyard, he'd have to stare at a side of a barn, which is what I'm looking at right now. That's why he turned the building. He knows they turned the building, so to give me this, I don't know, the guys were out there so slow, you can't tell. They were out there for months laying that thing out, putting down the stakes, laying down the rock, you're telling me all of a sudden you said, oh my God, where are you putting this building? Okay, thank you. I don't believe it.
Thank you. Try not to be repetitious if there's something additional that the board could listen to.
Yes, uh, my name's Glenn Markulyn, M A R K U L I N, I live on one twenty-nine Frank Applegate Road.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board, uh, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. You already went through the names.
So I'm right behind the garage, and I just found out this week that it was built in the wrong direction. Uh, never received any notification of when it was going up. Or, like I said, up until I got your letter and then just found out. And that it's in the easement facing my area. Now, I have been told that that will now be added to my deed as a measurement, I don't know if that's correct or not. Because the easements are counted.
So it's not an easement, it's a setback.
Or setback, okay.
Totally different.
They are.
This has zero impact on your property, other than it was built four foot closer to the rear property line.
So it wouldn't show on anything on my?
Absolutely not, it has nothing, it's forty-six feet away from your property. You have a fence on the rear property line that, where your property is. It has no impact, it won't show up on any title work, it has nothing to do with your property, it has nothing to do with Lot Three. There's no encroachment over the properties at all, or easements or anything, it's a setback issue, purely a setback issue.
Okay, now, I'm, I did witness this thing being built from day one, because I've been working from home. Uh, and it started off in that direction, as that gentleman said, pouring the extra dirt. From day one, it started, and they also took a long break after they put the frame up before they did the whole sides. At least a month, so somewhere in that time, I would think, if I was owning the house, this looks wrong. My concern right now is, he just said he plans to fit six to twelve cars. I don't see how that's physically possible, six cars in the ground space of that. I could see maybe four. Two and two up, and if he's storing that many, and he's gonna have electric, doesn't he need fire suppression if there's vehicles with fluids in it? That many vehicles?
Well, it's not up to the zoning officer, but knowing that this is a residential property, he's not required. I'm not gonna speak out of turn, he would have to speak to the fire official, but I'd be quite, I'll leave it at that. Well, that would be through the construction department, correct?
So, and, and for the chairman, uh, several, I would say, five, six years ago, I built the same exact size garage. You could physically put six cars in there if there's nothing else in that size, if there's nothing else in there, no tools, no workbenches, no nothing. Comfortably, it's a four-car garage. No.
And are you saying six, um, without a lift or with a lift?
No, you, if there was nothing around the perimeter of the garage, you could put six vehicles in there. It's possible, depending on the size vehicles, you're not gonna put six large pickup trucks in there. Uh, more comfortably though is four.
Yes, because a lot of these are older, what looks like eighties cars as well.
I would say four is probably more reasonable. So you can navigate around and, and use it as a garage, uh, six would be stretching it, but it's possible.
Uh, my name is Ania Markulyn, um, that's Markulyn, Y, uh, it's spelling A N I A. And the last name is Markulyn, M I R K U L I N. Um, I just wanted to
Thank you for raising your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to confirm that my husband, uh, confirm what he said, that, um, the stakes of the garage went in the, um, in the ground the way they are right now, there was absolutely no any other positioning of the garage. I, um, just like my husband, I work from home and I mostly have my office in the, by the kitchen table. So I see and I saw the work being done through the entire process, so they did have a break probably April, May, when they started working on it. And from day one, the stakes went where they are now, the, the way the building is constructed. So I was also wondering, um, how is this possible for the Jackson Township to sign off on it, since the original plans were that the garage was supposed to be kind of parallel to the house. And now it's perpendicular to the house, so for me, I would love to know who signed off on those plans and okayed it.
Well, based on what was originally approved in January of two thousand, I approved the location within the, the, um, the setbacks for the zone. Once they got their building permit, um, the construction department is charged with making sure that the structure is built to the approved plans, meaning the, the approved construction plans. Um, in most cases, they're not looking for the position of the building. Um, and because the building was repositioned, if it were repositioned in a spot where they didn't encroach into the setbacks, it would merely just come back to me for an amended zoning approval, um, shifting the location of the building. But because of the setback issues is certainly the reason why that they're here tonight.
And we also have other issues such as, um, the water. Once the trees were removed, and it was, I believe, eighty-one trees removed, we have constant water now. So for us, it's a problem in the future too. And we have a very, very wet summer, every weekend it's raining, you can do anything. So to us, I know that the town said that they have to plant twenty-six trees. They did plant shrubs, so I don't know if Jackson Township counts it as trees, because they're just shrubs about three, four feet. Because we need something to take this water and I see no trees, and they were supposed to plant the trees, like, January twenty twenty, I believe.
Well, the best I can do is, um, double check with the, um, tree removal, tree removal permit that was taken out. And the comments that were made by the, uh, tree specialist when he approved the application. And confirm with him if the plantings that were required comply with his approval.
So at this point, it's, I don't know who dropped the bomb, it looks like a Jackson Township, because we are now stuck with this monstrosity, we have to look at it. We have to put up with the water. There is crazy amount of groundhogs right now running back and forth, and those animals do damages to the house before they had habitat to live in. And now it's, it really is a problem for us, whoever did this. The trees, the eighty-one trees that now we have really groundhogs running on our lawn and, you know, doing the damages to the shed. So it was a really negligence on the part of the neighbor, he just chose to put the shed different way to me. And now he's trying to, I don't know, gaslight everyone here, because I don't believe that, oh, you know, I put the stake this way, but now it's this way. As you said, ultimately, he's the house owner and he should take responsibility for what he did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else coming forward to speak on this? I'm gonna close the public session.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hill, uh, question for you, I don't see a, a scale on the survey presented to us. Is the structure, is the configuration now, how far is it from the back of the residence?
So the, the scale is one inch equals thirty feet. And the distance between the garage and the rear residence, um, I don't, I actually have my, I'm not a good engineer, I don't have my scale with me right now. I can estimate it for you, if that's okay?
Please.
Here to here. I would say it's, let's, close to fifteen feet.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, James.
Based on the stat, what, what I've heard so far for the proofs, I'm not sure I'm ready to make a decision in this case. I would like to know, for example, what was the configuration when the permit was, when, when the application was applied for, for the permit? Was it in a different orientation? Obviously, Mr. Proporo looked at initially, he had indicated that the first application complied, uh, did not violate the setback requirements. Somehow it, it got turned around. And I would like to have further information in that regard, because that may have impact on the decision I'm going to make, that, that, that decision may be based on a self-created hardship here. If that's the, if that's the case, I may not be in a position to be able to approve this application. So I think I need to have more information, unless Mr. Proporo knows.
Well, in your package, there is the original zoning approval for the structure that was approved, uh, January of twenty twenty, that does show it, um, along the rear of the property line, or the rear of this, rear setback.
Right. Is that what you're looking? My question is, was, was that the configuration for which the permit was drawn?
That was the configuration that was approved by zoning. The construction, if, if I'm reading your question right, it, it, the construction department is looking at, um, nuts and bolts plans, and not looking at the, the actual survey.
I'm aware of that, my, my concern here, if it, if it got rotated ninety degrees, you would have had to have, take a look at, if they, if they even made the application, amended application for that, would it not?
Um, I was made aware of it, um, after the fact, which prompted me to ask for the as-built survey.
Well, that's my point, in other words, if, if this entire project proceeded through construction, based on, on permits drawn or applications made for the original location, which was sideways as opposed to ninety degrees. And then it got built in violation, I would, I could have a problem with that. I can have a problem with that being a self-created hardship on the part of the owner.
I understand.
I'm requesting that, for me, I'm not, I don't know that I can make a decision on this case until I get. Firm information, it probably should come from the property owner. As to how the orientation changed. If he has a copy of the original application that he filed. We may or may not have it on, on file here, we probably should, but I'm not sure. And all of a sudden it changed, it rotated, which is a problem, it's a problem for me in this regard. Now, I understand that the, the differences that you're talking about here, and this is a rather large garage. I just, I, I drove by the property and I also got an aerial photograph of it, and so it's about half the size of your house. So it's a big garage. And I understand the problems that, that could occur. We, it's already been indicated to us that. The number of cars is not for us to think about, what is up to us to think about? Is whether or not the applicant is entitled to the, the variance. And if you've created the conditions that causes variance. That plays on, it's a function of the decision I have to make, and I don't think I'm ready to do that yet. So I would, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how other board members feel, but. My suggestion would be to carry this until we get information on the, the application itself. If the, if the municipality proceeded on the original. Location and it got, it got changed somehow during, or obviously prior to construction. And the, and the owner was, knew or should have known that it was going into the wrong direction, that would have an impact on my decision.
Mr. Porro, just to clarify for the record, my understanding is that the sole reason for the variance is the fact that the building was turned, is that correct?
No, the sole reason for the application is because. Because of the setback issue, if it were turned and it met the setbacks, we would not be here. Could we merely just do a, an amended application to my office? Because it would have met, ideally met the setbacks. As far as. I, I shouldn't. Continue with Mr. Hurley's thought, but, you know, nine times out of ten. When the construction department does go out and do an inspection on a footing. Or a pool collar or something like that, they're looking more at the, once again, the field cop, the nuts and bolts of it, they're not. They may not have the approved zoning. Out in the field when they're doing their inspections.
So if you'll allow me to rephrase my understanding, the turning of the building caused the violation of setback? And just to clarify, there was no other application made to the zoning department regarding the building, other than the initial? I, having listened to the testimony, I, I, I'm taken back. By the testimony. To have an expense which, of, of this nature. To be incurred by the homeowner, not know who made the decision, I find that to be. He's sworn to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I, I don't believe that to be the case in his testimony this evening. I, I, you can tell by my. Reactions, my handling of this, I, I have my, I have strong reservations. About this application, I can appreciate my fellow board members' concerns, but I think. I think this board should move forward on this application positively or negatively. Given the testimony we have, I, I, I know where Jim's going with and looking for additional documentation. But I don't think it's gonna change the situation as to what happened there, that the homeowner ultimately. Is responsible for any decision making, therefore the buck stops there. So again, I bring into question the testimony presented this evening. I'll pass my final comments, if the board members have comments at this time, thank you.
So for the chair, I have just one more comment for the board. Being that this is pole barn type construction. Each bay is about eight feet when you build a pole barn. So the depth, you have a post at eight, another, a post in the corner, another post at eight, another post at eight, another post at eight. These are light duty buildings. It's very possible to remove an eight foot section of the structure. To make it shorter, to make it forty foot long instead, and therefore not have the encroachment or the variance requirement. And that's something the board could consider in their deliberations as an option.
My lifestyle is retirement.
Based, based on the information given by Mr. Porro. And, and the proofs that have been submitted by the applicant in support, I, I agree with Mr. Costanzo on this matter. I'm torn myself. But we have an obligation here, the obligation is. To make sure that the law is complied with, the municipal land use law. And there are requirements of the applicant in order to establish the necessary proofs to be entitled to the variance that is being requested. And it just appears to me from the testimony that I've heard from the applicant. Where all of a sudden this building got turned, when it originally complied and now is in violation. To me, it's a self-created hardship, and I can't, I can't vote affirmatively for this application.
All right, I was trying to give an alternative, Mr. Hill was talking about. They can change on the piece, we can have a garage sitting there now.
Well, my, my, my comment was that if the board was struggling with. Being able to grant the variance for this, the other option would be. To shorten the back, to shorten the length of the building, to remove. The encro, the encroachment across the setback, and then there is no variance is required. Then there's no variance required, so if you denied the variance, that would be. That's one of their options, or to appeal your decision would be the other option, but.
You both understand what the dialogue has been going back and forth, they've been able to follow it?
Can I say something? I'm sure the township came down and inspected my, the, the wooden stakes in the ground. And that's where we, they said it's already, right, and that's where we built the garage, so, I don't know how.
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, look, and Mr. Porro can back me up, we'll be, being that we're very familiar with the building inspection process in town. Building inspectors do not verify the location of improvements, they verify the footing depths. That would be the first time that they step foot on the property, then they would do a framing inspection and so on. They, sir, they do not verify that you put the locate, building in the correct location.
Chairman? Just a legal point for the attorney. Even though the, the building department may have issued a certificate of occupancy, that does not, my understanding is, it does not bind this. This, this board on making a decision of that nature. The fact that a certificate of occupancy has been issued essentially means that it complies with the construction code. Does not necessarily mean it complies with the zoning laws. And if I'm not mistaken, reliance on the, on the certificate, the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Is not grounds for granting this variance.
Mr. Hurley is one hundred percent correct, just because the CO was issued does not mean that the zoning was complied with, and that's why we're here tonight.
And I was, I was speculating, excuse me, I was speculating that the CO was issued, I, I shouldn't have made that presumption.
Just to correct the record, we're not even a hundred percent sure that the CO was issued, however, we are making that assumption for the purposes of this hearing.
All right, so we're gonna vote on this?
I, I present a motion to deny this application. Given the testimony heard this evening, I, I find it questionable at best. I feel that it is a self-inflicted hardship, and as such, I, I vote in denial, I'm putting forward a motion. In denial of this application.
I'll second the motion on that basis that it's a self-created hardship.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and yes, vote. A yes vote would mean it would be denied.
So I have a question. Are we also voting on? An adjustment that they can?
No, no, my, my, my motion is a flat out denial under the self hardship situation. What remedy he seeks, that's of, of the applicant's own doings. So question before the board currently is whether or not to approve the variance for the garage as built.
Okay.
Okay, so I need, you got a motion, a second, I need, go ahead. Everybody voted? No, no, I didn't say real call.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley? Ms. Camilla?
No.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Njerian?
Yes. So what we did, we voted, and they denied it, okay? So you have to understand, talk to the engineer if you can. He doesn't need it, right?
Correct.
So if you fix your shed. It comply with fifty to fifty, you don't need to come back. All right? I'm only hoping.
It's legal, sure.
Go ahead, talk in the microphone.
Just in response to the neighbor behind us.
We don't.
I, I wanna make a response on the record.
The record on this matter.
Regarding the trees.
That's not.
They're not shrubs.
All right.
Ma'am, excuse me, it has to be related to. We do have other applications.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're gonna move on to the next application.
Thank you.
We're done with this application.
Thank you for raising your right hands, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're going to give before this board shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, can you each please state your full names, spelling your last name for the record?
Jeff Syriaks, C Y R I A C K S.
Christine Syriaks, C Y R I A C K S.
Thank you, and can one of you put your current address on the record, please?
Five Moet Court.
Thank you.
So really, it's just getting approval for the pool that we're putting. Where it's located on this chart. We, we're on a, a corner, so we have a lot of side yard. It's really the only place that we can fit the pool, we're also putting. A pool shed. Probably about, I think it's fourteen feet from the pool. That will be in that, that corner, and it's ten feet from each side of the fence.
Six by ten? Yes.
Six foot walls.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a picture of it if you need. Okay.
It's, there's, the box is, is further down on the opposite side.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Maybe about, yes, yeah, yeah.
So we were estimating that the, the core, the rear corner of the pool is. Closest to the property line, and it's about twenty feet. I think what the board needs to do is because you grant variance relief. You have to indicate what that dimension actually is in your, in your deliberations, or as part of your, your motion. So this, I'm sorry, the shed is specifically stated to be ten foot off of the. Front lot, I'm sorry, the front line along Freeze Road, and then the. Ten foot off the, the, the rear, but the pool also has to be noted as a dimension too.
For rent? It, it's, it's off. So long ago, with the pool company, we did it last November. Yes, we have the fence already, we did the variance for that, the fence is up.
I, I believe it's ten, I believe. So the side of the pool to the fence? The property line goes out to the road. Yeah, yeah, no, I understand, I, I just don't wanna give you the wrong answer, I, I believe it's.
Can I make a correction, I was looking at the cleaner copy of the plan, the, the very last sheet. The fence is located, the, the fence is located inside the concrete walkway already, about six feet off of the walkway. The property line is actually along the curb line, the fence is not the property line. The property line is the edge of pavement, the curbing. So from a dimensional standpoint, if the pool is ten feet off the fence. The fence is, say, twelve feet off of the property line, then it's about twenty-two feet. And I think to be comfortable, the board could say twenty feet off of the property line.
So what we're saying, trying to convey, you have to go home and look at your plans now. Make sure that the edge of the pool closest to the fence is at least twenty feet away from your property line. You gotta find out, go to your survey, find out where your property line is and measure from that property line in. And know that your pool can't be within twenty feet. Because potentially, if we vote favorably, it's gonna be in the resolution that that pool has to be. Outside of twenty feet from the property. So it's important that you go home and look at your plans and, and know that, and know where that, where your pool lies, because if they erect. And it's fifteen feet in, you turn into the application before where you have. it's six foot off, and it's 15 feet in, you turn into the application before where you have issues.
Okay, so, with, uh, board members and chairman, I'd like to provide more clarification. Uh, the pool appears to be 10 foot from the fence, is that your intention?
Yes.
Okay, which would be six feet from the property line, so 16 feet from the property line, not 20, sorry.
But we're open, all right, so 16. Now, with regards to the pool equipment, that seems to be a bit closer to the fence line, is, is that an issue?
Uh, that's.
With, with.
It's in the front yard, so you just have to, you just have to make a note of a dimension, that's all.
But, so the pool equipment is within that 16 feet, correct?
The, it, it, it's inside the fence, I just, it looks like it's closer to, it's closer, it's probably closer than like eight feet from the property line, or so.
And just in your package, there is the resolution from the 2018 approval for the fence, and the board approved the fence at six feet from the property line, which appears to be its current location.
Okay, all right.
Is there gonna be utilities going on inside the shed?
No.
Any other questions, James? Any questions from board members? Anybody in the audience wanna speak on this? Closing public session? All right, so talk to us here, I think we have all the information that we need, right, Mr. Hill? Okay.
Would you like me to clarify?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the shed is 10 feet from, is no closer than 10 feet to any property line. The pool is no closer than 15 feet to the property line along, uh, I said Freeze, but it's Forens. And then the pool equipment is no closer than eight feet to the property line along Forens.
Okay, so now we need, uh, any discussions from board members? Or why don't we just make a motion in a second?
I will put forth a motion. I'll put forth a motion to approve this application with the stipulation that the shed will be no, no closer than 10 feet from the property line. The pool will be no closer than 15 feet to the property line, and the pool equipment will be no closer than eight feet to the property line.
We got a motion? A motion in a second, vote call please, Diane.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camilla?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Njerian?
Yes, enjoy your pool.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next and who's last, come on up. Couldn't pronounce your name, folks.
Dovit Gottesman, G O T T E S M A N.
Okay, you're gonna be sworn in.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Where do you live, tell us?
28 Imperial Place, Jackson, New Jersey, 0527.
Okay, tell us what you'd like to do.
I would like to do, I have a conservation easement of 25 foot from East Veterans Highway. And, um, I would like to do a fence till eight feet into my property, because I have a utility easement of six feet. And, um, I would like to have most uses or usage of my property in putting a fence. And, and put, and ask for, to put a gate of eight foot instead of six, to have the same privacy. And based off my lines where I want to put the gates, the fences, I'm not bothering any, anyone's blind spots. And I've asked my neighbors privately if they would like that, will approve, so it's in you guys' hands.
Okay, so the easement, why don't you speak up?
Okay, um, so the applicant, just real quick, just for clarification, we're looking, the, the plan is up on the screen. The applicant proposes an eight-foot-high solid fence from the, if you're looking at the, the house from the road, at the rear left corner to the, to the side lot line, along the, along the side lot line to the rear. Uh, the rear of his property is along East Veterans Highway, however, that's not roadway frontage. But there is a 20-foot, 20-foot, 25-foot-wide conservation easement in there, along the rear. He wants to, uh, encroach within the conservation easement and then continue along the opposite side to the front corner, front right corner of his house. This board, a, a conservation easement is recorded as part of a subdivision in most cases. It's, 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 this board does not have the jurisdiction to grant deviations from conservation easement restrictions. You can't do that, that's not your jurisdiction. Typically, conservation easements, and I should say historically, this town has viewed no disturbance and no development within conservation easements, period. So even when we're, even when we're, you've, uh, considering development applications that are proposing conservation easements, we, we're, this board has been very consistent in saying, requiring that no disturbance and no, no, uh, development with those easements can occur. So, um, and I'll, I'll defer the attorney, I don't believe the board has any jurisdiction in this case to allow disturbance or any improvements within a conservation easement, period.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just add one thing. As board members understand, if you grant an easement, it goes to someone. And if you want to build something in there, you need someone's permission. So on its face this evening, forget that the township has a policy of not allowing people to go into conservation easements that developers grant to the town. That's making an assumption that this conservation easement was granted to Jackson Township and not the state of New Jersey, or the county of Ma, Ocean. Regardless, on its face, there's no permission from the easement owner here this evening. So the board can act on, period. If the applicant wanted to come back and have permission from someone who this easement was granted to, if he were able to acquire that, then perhaps the board could look at it, but at this point in time, you don't have permission of the owner. Just like the guy who was here and had the, the electric towers in the backyard, he can't put a permanent structure in there. JCPN L or First Energy doesn't grant them. In this particular case, without the permission of the person who the easement was granted in favor of, you have no ability. But frankly, he doesn't have the ability to ask for it, because it's not his.
That's correct, any, any fence that were to be approved in this matter would have to be out, outside of easement area. Uh, it's just, there's no way that a fence can be put in that area at this point, and, and, and it would need to be, this plan would need to be amended to reflect that.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
I, I need a clarification of betterment. Uh, we're talking about better, betterment of, of the easement, does that include landscaping or grading, uh, has that been defined?
It, uh, conservation easement language in town and by ordinance allows property owners to essentially maintain the area. They're allowed to remove any dead, fallen debris, trees, and leaves and things along those, that they're, they're allowed to maintain, but you're not allowed to disturb and destroy or build anything.
Maintaining also erecting new foliage, new, uh, shrubbery?
You can, yes, you're allowed to do, you're allowed to put plantings in there.
And, and those restrictions are called out on the final plat of the subdivision plans. They have been since before the turn of the century, because we had to figure out who they were in favor of. Just because you say you're giving an easement, you need to tell us who you're giving it to, you're giving it to the township of Jackson, you're giving it to, in this case, the county of Ocean, or is it going to the state for a particular purpose? So they're on the map, so while we have the nice photocopy of a portion of the survey, on the survey would have the restrictions, and if it didn't, it would refer back to the final map that this lot was created from. So this may have been a 20, 30, 40 lot subdivision. On that final map somewhere are the restrictions that are applicable to this conservation easement. So once again, without the easement information before us, we have no standing to deal with it. By frankly, the applicant have any standing to make the application, because he doesn't have the owner's permission. So I think we should just move on from that, and if they want to come back later with something, that's fine, but I think it's sort of a moot point at this juncture.
I have a question for the professionals. If the plan were amended to place the structure closer to the home and outside of the conservation easement, is that something the board couldn't consider?
You would be, yes, and it's, it's purely in the sense that they're proposing an eight-foot fence at this, as opposed to the maximum permit of six.
Yes, um, basically, I was denied by the, sorry, I was denied by the planning, uh, board. I was denied by the planning board, and I was just told that I can go for variance, and I truly understand that I have to go. Meaning, uh.
He was the zoning officer.
The zoning officer.
Planning boards and other jurisdictions similar to the zoning.
Yeah, yeah, the zoning officer denied me, and they, they, they claimed I can come for variance, so that's what I can, that's what I did. And I truly hear from the engineers, or whatever, yes, the engineers, that I, you can't, you guys can't grant me permission. Um, I would like to ask, who can I go to?
So, so, I, I don't want you to think you wasted your time here.
Right.
The only, the only, the only thing that you're gonna have to agree to is, or you're gonna have to amend your application, you can do that verbally tonight, to not develop the conservation easement with your fence, your fence will stay outside the conservation, but you still want an eight-foot-high fence. The variance is for the height of the fence, not the, not necessarily the location. Okay, so you can tell the board that you are amending your application to not incorporate it, or not locate it within the conservation easement, and that you still want the eight-foot fence.
Yes. Yes, I do want to.
Tell us why, you want the eight-foot fence?
Have more privacy. Have more privacy.
Through the chair.
Chairman.
Sir, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
The elevation of your house, does your property slope down to the backyard?
A bit, yes.
That's why, so basically, when you're on, on the rear of your property, in the rear deck, you're basically looking out over into the, into the property behind you, correct? The roadway?
Yes.
For the elevation.
Yeah.
Do you feel that an eight-foot fence will remedy that situation?
Will do better, the, the, the most, the most thing why I was here is for the conservation easement, but, um.
Have you considered landscaping, shrubbery, that, that will grow over time and far exceed an eight-foot fence?
Maybe eventually, uh, I was trying to get approval for the fence and see where I'm going now, and then, then I'll make my decision, what I'll put there. I could put landscaping, I could put, I want, I'm paying a enormous amount of taxes to have a nice big property, and unfortunately, I wasn't told to have a conservation easement that I can do anything with the property, so that's what I was.
It's not necessarily the case that you can't do anything with the property, however, the easement itself has to be, uh, acknowledged and, and respected. Um, so essentially, what we're saying is that you can still build your fence if you were to amend your application to make sure that it was outside of that easement, closer to your property, closer to your house, okay? And the board is specifically asking about the hardship that's, as to why you were requesting an eight-foot fence rather than a six-foot fence that's typically permitted. Um, so I'd like, if you could, to elaborate why you would need more pri, why you need more privacy, just to give the board a sense of the hardship that you face.
So it's basically, I'm not focusing on the eight-foot, um, fence, I was more focusing on the conservation easement. Yes, I will.
So then, then you don't need a variance, so if, if.
Yeah, I was just sent here, you know, it says here.
If you, if you're, look, this board can't allow you to build within the conservation, so that's off, that's off the table. So now, if you're sug, if you're offering to only build a six-foot-high fence, then you don't need a variance.
Right.
And all you have to do is submit a revised permit plan to Jeff, and he can approve it within 24 hours, I'm told.
Yeah, and the primary reason you're in front of the board is because the fence was taller than six feet.
Can he just, can he just withdraw his application? That's all he has to do.
Yep.
Yeah, I was misinformed that I can't come in front of this board and ask for conservation easement, that's it, that's it.
If he withdraws the application, we don't have to make any decisions.
Right, would you like to withdraw your application?
Yeah.
Does he understand why?
Yeah, do you, I, I just, that's right, I wanna, I wanna, I just want to put on the record, do you understand what we're telling you? The, the plan as you proposed it, had your fence within this conservation easement, that is something that we can, that the board itself cannot allow.
I truly understand that, but.
Yeah, so since we're past that, the eight-foot fence would require a variant, variance. However, you're telling us, the board now, that you do not wish to build the eight-foot fence, you'd rather build a six-foot fence?
My question is, if I could put trees, not a fence, and such as, if, if I'm responsible, I, I, I've been told that I'm responsible for the, for the landscaping, meaning I have to keep it clean, if not, I will get fines. And, um, if, if I can put, let's say, trees there, um, in the conservation easement, if that's allowed, but I believe it's not, because you can't grant it.
No, we're not gonna give legal advice. The property survey has references a final map, the final map shows the restriction. Okay, if you follow the restriction, you're fine. So if, at some point he wants to come back to Jeff's office and say, I want to put up a bunch of these bushes or trees, that's probably fine. But I, I don't think the board should be giving him legal advice about a document that he had to recognize when he bought the property. Part of the title of the property. It's on the survey, it's on the subdivision map, there was a reason for it. So to the extent that would planting a natural buffer or a, a row of evergreens or arborvitae that were columnar, and it would fill in and create a barrier, yes, that's probably permitted.
Just don't put something in there that's near to eat.
I, I think, I think for the purposes of this hearing, we should focus on the fence itself. Uh, you know, the board is not in a position to tell you whether or not you can put trees there. Um, we're here solely to, to judge the variance request on the fence. So, that would be something you would have to look into.
And we can pull the language for the conservation easement, but, um, the idea that you were misinformed, um, it's a little disheartening, because I don't, I know that there was no option for this board to grant any relief from the easement restrictions. But we will pull the language from the easement restrictions and let you know what you can or can't do within the easement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to?
So, uh, again, I'm gonna ask you, are, are you withdrawing your application, or would you like the board to vote on it?
Nothing, the, the main thing was the fence, um, to do with the property, more in the eight-foot property line. But, um, I will be with the, with the zoning or something, with the.
Yes, I, I'm just, I'm asking if you, if you're, I'm asking if you, you are withdrawing, okay, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
To the record, thank you, sir, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to close.
Aye. All in favor?
Okay, there you go. Good job, ladies.